We go into our regular business meeting. I need to, we're returning from closed session. And I'm going to make a motion to make a preliminary nonrenewal for 1.25 high school teaching positions.
For layoff purposes.
For layoff purposes. I need somebody.
You need a motion? I'll make a motion.
We need somebody to second the motion?
Second.
And then we need to do a roll call?
Any discussion?
Oh, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with what Stephanie, oh, excuse me. For layoff purposes, a nonrenewal for layoff purposes. This teacher up until, whoever that teacher is, we don't know, up until now was teaching our children. So through the new system that's going to be put in place, we're going to eliminate that position. But up until now, that person was good enough to be teaching our children.
We're, we are making the motion just to eliminate the high school position based on the classes that we need taught, based on what the students at the high school
Right.
registered for.
Okay.
If I understand that correctly.
So this is preliminary. When does the final, when is the final decision made?
By the board meeting in May. I had to think what month we were in. So yeah, the May board meeting.
The first board meeting. And we're required to provide notification prior to May 1st, correct? So.
Right, we give a preliminary notice.
A preliminary notice has to at least be made by May 1st. So that's.
Yep.
Any additional discussion? All right, so we have the motion and we have a second. And we need to do a roll call vote. Nancy?
Hi.
No?
It's a regular.
I think it's just a regular.
We can do just a regular for layoff notice.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Okay, so now we are going to convene into our open session. And we're going to call to order and verify that everybody received the notice and the agenda. Okay, and then we need to do a pledge to the flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, so the second item on our agenda is, this is our annual organizational meeting. And we will have our election for board officers. And that is chaired by our senior board member, who is Nancy Zabrowski.
Wow, never thought I'd be the senior board member. But here I am. Okay, so I'm going to read the policy on board officer elections. The school board shall elect a president, vice president, clerk, and treasurer from among its membership. Board officers shall be elected annually at the organizational meeting of the board, held on the fourth Monday of April or within 30 days thereafter. The member with the longest total service on the board shall chair the organizational meeting. Board officers shall be elected by a majority vote of the board. Secret ballots may be used in the election of officers. Do you have secret ballots ready? All right, okay. So first, we're going to elect a president. So are there any nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate Luanne Bird.
Luanne, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I have to say it three times. Are there any other nominations? No other nominations. So we have a nomination for Luanne as president. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Congratulations, Luanne.
Thank you.
Next is vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Eileen Velitas.
Eileen, do you accept that nomination?
I'll accept that one.
Are there any other nominations for vice presidents? Any other nominations for vice presidents? And any other nominations for vice presidents? Hearing none, we have a nomination, Eileen Velitas, for vice president. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Treasurer, do we have a nomination for treasurer?
I nominate Stephanie Richter.
Stephanie, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I will.
Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, Stephanie is our nominee for treasurer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. No, I mean, that's nobody. It's not that I'm opposing it.
Nancy, if anyone should have said no, I should have.
Nancy said no.
And finally, for clerk, are there any nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Quinn Burnett.
Quinn, will you accept the nomination?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, Quinn is our clerk nomination. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have, to recap, president, Luanne Bird, vice president, Eileen Velitas, treasurer, Stephanie Richter, and clerk, Quinn Burnett. And I will turn it over to our new president.
Where is my gavel? We don't do that. Okay. Okay, well, I'm nervous about this, but thank you, colleagues, and I will do my best as your new leader. So the first order of business here is school board committee appointments. So you all submitted some ideas, and we've put these together. So I'll just pass these around to see if, hopefully, this works for everyone. And one of the reasons we expedited this is because we have a lot of business going on in our finance and facility committee and stuff that needs to get going right away. So I thank Kathy for expediting the process of, and before I do do this, I would like to just mention that on our policy, we do have four standing committees. And it is stated in our policy that the committees work for the board. So really, these are your opportunity at these committee levels to hammer out a lot of details and hopefully save the full board some time, but also narrow things down so that we can make better decisions as a full board. So the committees work for the board. And we have the four personnel, policy, finance, and facilities, and legislative. So that's, do I need to read these names? Or is that, no, I think we're pretty good then. So our chairs will run those committees, and then we will structure the board meetings in the future to get some reports on our regular meeting, correct? That's how we'll do that? All right. Good. That's done. Any questions about that? I do want to mention, if you're an alternate, we had a couple committees, well, one committee in particular, a lot of people wanted to be on, so we tried to work it out. And alternates are definitely a part of the committee and get all the information, correct? So we feel like you'll all be able to participate in these committees.
And any board member can attend?
Any board, right, we're all welcome to attend.
Just so it's on the record, you may want to just at least read them in. So who's the chairs and who's on what committees?
Oh, okay. All right.
If you want me to, I can, or you can read them. I don't care either way.
Go ahead.
I have to borrow yours.
Oh, I'll get it. I got it. Personnel committee, we've got Nancy as chair. Eileen, John Jones, and Jonathan Kegel as an alternate on the personnel committee. Policy committee, Quinn Burnett is doing such a great job that he should continue.
He's up.
And Eileen and John Jones will be on that. I'll be an alternate for that one. Finance and facilities and transportation, Stephanie Richter will chair that. And Quinn, Jonathan Kegel, and John Jones as an alternate, but I know that all of you wanted to be on, so I hope you all participate. I'm sure that'll work out. Legislatively, we have Eileen Velitas, who's the chair, doing a great job too, so she gets to continue. And Quinn and Jonathan, and I'll be the alternate for that one. That one's kind of an as-needed committee. It doesn't really meet regularly, and it's kind of when the budget process, isn't that when you really get the most sometimes? And then in, yeah, okay.
And it's just always nice to read the WASB weekly, you know, legislative update so we're all kind of aware of what's going on for when it actually comes to us.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Because every once in a while, there's hearings that we should, we might want to participate in of some sort. So keeping up to date is a big part of our job legislatively. All right, and then we do have some school board liaisons to schools.
That's later.
And that's later in the meeting? Oh, okay. Sorry. We'll hold off on that until a little bit later. All right, so if not, any other comments about committees? All right. I do want to take a minute to welcome our two new board members. We sort of just jumped right in, and welcome to the board. We're looking forward to working with you. And anytime you have questions, you can call any one of us. We've been around a while, all right?
Luanne, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't see the liaisons to the schools on the agenda anywhere else. I see Park and Rec.
Are they on the agenda?
They're not.
Okay. All right. Why don't you email me your requests on that, so that we'll know we can get that done as well? All right. So this is going to be fun. I'm glad I have colleagues to help me do this. Okay, comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. This is the only time audience members may comment on future or current agenda items as this is new business. Persons addressing the board are asked to state their name and address for the record, and their comments may be limited to only one time and only five minutes. Would anyone like to address the board? Not at this time? All right. So next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. These items will all be voted on without discussion. And, but before we do that, I want to find out if anybody wants to pull any of the consent agenda items to be voted on and discussed separately. You need to read through the list. Okay, first, approval, A, approval of staff resignation, B, approval of staff retirements, C, approval of early grad requests, D, approval of 2014-15 calendar revised, E, approval of school board policy 112, school district decision-making, F, approval of school board policy 723.4, emergency school closings, G, approval of school board policy 751.5, transporting students in private or district vehicles, H, approval of communication plan, I, approval of April vouchers and vouchers payable, J, approval of March 24th and April 14th, 2014 school board meeting minutes. Would anyone like to pull any of those?
Yes. Excuse me. I would like to pull, I think it's B. B. Let me just make sure here.
Staff retirement.
Yeah. Yep, B.
Any other ones? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Without B, with the exception of B, sorry. Thank you. So A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J. And there's been a motion by Quinn. Did I get that right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then let's take a look at B, approval of staff retirements. I need a motion to, wait.
A motion, discussion.
Discussion first? Okay.
The, one person that's retiring is asking for some money. And I'm wondering, what is that and why is that?
I can address that quick if you'd like.
Yes.
When the board, was it a year and a half ago or two years ago, when they went through the retirement list, it was when Tom Vogel was still here. And we had a list of 14 people that the board made a motion that said they would get this amount when they retire. And, or when they reached the retirement age. And she basically is just saying, we already have that agreement. It was signed by the board president and the clerk and all that stuff. And that's the sum that she gets upon retirement, based on the contract they had in place at that time.
Okay.
I was on, I remember being on personnel committee at the time. It was when we first came on. And I did, I did cross-reference her request, because you know I do that, with the notes that I had on the chart for those people that we had pros at the level that they had earned, so.
And it's correct and all?
It was the correct one.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve consent agenda item B, approval of staff retirements. So wait. Can you hear a second?
I can second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none, the motion carries. Item six, old business. Discuss and take possible action on food service contract. Since Doug is not with us, do you want to talk about that?
Patiently waiting for this to scroll all the way down there, but I already know the answer. So Doug sent an email out to the staff, and unfortunately, with some health issues, family was not able to be here tonight. However, he did do an extensive review of the three proposals that we received. And Aviance is the group, we're also sitting here to answer any questions you may have, is the group that they're recommending. They're our current food service contractor. And if I remember Doug's email that he sent to the board, he pointed out that this was the only one that, the only company that actually put a proposal in that met all the criteria that DPI asked for. Which is nice to have a detailed organization like that, that provides what we need to make an informed decision. And I guess Doug also pointed out that we're happy with the service we've been receiving the past couple of years.
Any questions? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the contract. The food service contract recommended by Doug Johnson, which would be, let me see if I get this all right here now. It would be the food contract with Aviance.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Our motion to approve. Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along here. Okay, B, preliminary staffing plan. And I do believe that there will be some questions about this one. That would be Joel Green. All right, questions? Tell us what, you're actually just updating us again?
Sixteen minutes.
Do we have questions? Yes?
Just a reminder that this is the preliminary one. If we do any adding or subtracting of individuals, it always goes through the board. So we're, and like in the email that I sent out earlier today, we're providing a lot more detail than is typical, mostly so that you can wrap your hands around the kind of staffing we have in an organization this large. So that, you know, you're more comfortable in contributing and in the discussions. So he did put a lot of time in putting the detail together. We actually have even more detail than that, but we'll keep that for now. But I mean, to the point where you can ask, you can name an individual and we have the information, you know, right down to the last person now. So it's a preliminary staffing report, and you'll, it'll come back again the next board meeting, and hopefully then we'll finalize it. But even when you finalize it, if it's, things can change. When it gets to be July or August, and we have an influx of kids that need another kindergarten section or first grade section, we always bring that to the board as well. It's so it's on an as-needed basis. And typically, that would happen on the early grades, not the higher end, because we can predict those easier.
This will be voted on at the next board meeting? Do we actually?
You vote to approve the preliminary, they actually do a two-step process. So you approve the preliminary plan, and then the next meeting, you'll, if you like it, you vote to approve it.
Okay, so there's still more, two more times we're going to look?
Whatever you want.
We only have one meeting.
One meeting. Okay, that's what else.
Unless we need to push it back for whatever reason.
Right.
It's May, right? But you use this to drive your budget numbers as well.
Well, we do that, but we also use it to drive, like, preliminary notices, final notices, and those are statutorily set, so.
All right, any other questions about the staffing?
The only, we were, Joel and I were talking a little bit today, is under the technology, when we see it the next time through, maybe clean up some of these titles. So that the titles correlate with the titles that were.
I spent quite a bit of time with Eric today. He was out quite a bit last week, ill, so we didn't get to it before this meeting, so.
You know, just so we, you know, when I was looking at it, it didn't quite tie into, like, the positions that we had approved previously as part of the technology three-year plan. And I, you know, if they could kind of tidy that up, then I think it would make everybody under, you know, it'll just be easier for everybody to understand what the positions actually are and what they do, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll see you again in May with an updated plan.
I hope so.
And all of you folks in the audience will be here. That'd be great. Okay. Okay. And all of us watching. Okay, thank you so much, Joel, for that. Okay, moving on to new business. These are all different positions now that we need representatives on. Discuss and take action on Hales Corners Park and Rec Liaison, and that's a new one this year, correct?
No.
We've had that? Okay, who's on that?
I was currently.
Do you need to live in Hales Corners to do that? Because we use Hales Corners, but we're just in Franklin.
I don't think so.
I'm willing to do that, unless you wanted to.
I, you know, it's pretty, yeah, I mean, it's pretty easy. But, you know, it'd be nice to have somebody else get appointed with.
John will take that one? Great. Do we need to vote on each one of these?
Yes, so to take possible action.
There can be a motion on each one.
Individually, or should we just do the whole bunch?
You need to do each one.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for John. Anybody else interested?
I'll make a motion to approve John Jones as the Hales Corners Park and Rec Liaison.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay. Next, discuss and take possible action on Greenfields Park and Rec, and I think that's, Nancy?
That has been me, and I would be happy to continue unless someone else has a burning desire to.
Anyone else interested? If not, we'll let Nancy, I would entertain a motion for Nancy.
Can I will second?
Who's going to move? I don't think.
I'll move.
John moves, and Eileen seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. Next, we will, it passes. Discuss and take possible action on CISA appointment. I did that one last time, and if no one has a burning desire to do that, I will do it again. Or do you want to do it?
No, 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 no. No, I mean, that's.
Can you tell us more about what?
I think you know a little bit more about it.
Let me tell you what that is. CISA is a regional agency that provides a lot of services for local school districts. And it is actually governed by school board members from all the districts, and there's 11 Cisas around the state. We're divided into 11 Cisas, okay? And then from all of those board members, they elect a smaller governing board, what's it called? Board of Control. And so we send a representative to a meeting once a year, and then from that meeting, all of the districts vote on that Board of Control. And frankly, that was the only thing I did last year. And after that, you don't, you don't go. You don't have to go. So that's all that's involved in this.
This is the associated stuff.
Oh, and it's all here for the CISA rep. So I'm happy to do that one more time.
I mean, we use CISA sometimes for, like, our, some of our special ed training and things.
Right, right. They provide programming.
Programming.
They use, they do the gifted and talented as well, or?
What, typically, if, you know, we have, we don't have enough kids for a full-time employee, they'll hire the full-time employee, and in districts, they'll send them out, contract with the districts. And they'll do the training, the educator effectiveness, they coordinate a lot of the training through DPI with that. And then if we have kids who need to be removed from this location and take an alternative placement for school, it's arranged oftentimes through CISA or a 6630 with another district.
And all of those details are not our, as a representative from our board, unless you run to be on the Board of Control, we really didn't get into any of that. I went to one meeting and voted who was going to be on the Board of Control, and they really have all that pretty well set unless there's an open seat. If you're interested, John, do you want to go?
I still don't know enough about it to be able to speak up.
I'll go this year again.
I will learn more about it before next year, so.
Yeah, exactly.
So I can make an educated volunteerism.
Anyone else? I mean, I'm happy to let someone else.
It's a hard one, because I actually also was a representative and went to the first meeting, which is a voting meeting, and not being, you know, not being as involved in the decisions and just knowing that it supports our district, it was hard to get a good handle on what exactly we use them for.
All right.
So then I will make, I'll make a motion for Luanne Bird to be our CISA representative.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, discuss and take possible action on a WASB delegate. Again, thanks for reminding me to go back up a little bit. The, this one involves a little bit more work. You're our delegate now. Do you want to explain, there's me, a couple, once a year, the WASB has a convention, and at that convention, are all of our members take positions. And that is what the WASB then lobbies on our behalf, okay? So that's what that's all about. This person becomes our delegate at that convention.
Correct.
And Eileen's been it, I think, was I an alternate last year?
I think you were. And what, you know, what that person will do is bring to, you know, make sure our board is informed of the resolutions that are on the table. And then, but prior to the January convention, is to get input from our members as far as what direction, you know, we want to vote when we go, whoever the delegate is. So it requires just reading through the packet, making sure that our board, it gets on our agenda for our board to go through, and then being present at the January convention. Is it the first, I can't remember if it's the Monday or, I can't remember if it's the first day or the second day. Maybe the first day.
The convention?
Yeah.
No, I think it's the second day.
Second day? The second day in the afternoon. Which, so it's probably the Tuesday afternoon at, like, after, you know, like, 1:00.
Those dates are all set now, too, so you could go in and.
And usually, it's a good fit for someone who is an interest in legislative also. I did it for you. So it's a good fit.
Okay, so who would like to do that again? More this time?
If you want to do it again, I can do it.
I'd be willing to do it, but, I mean, I'm also really happy to give someone else the opportunity to, I kind of got in there, and then it kind of just gave me more input at a state level, some of the things, the issues that are facing the state, so.
I'd take it.
Great.
It's a motion, right? I move.
I'm sure. Was anybody else? Yeah, forgot to ask anybody else. No. Seeing none.
I move that Jonathan Kegel be our WASB representative.
Second. I will second that.
Okay. Eileen seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discuss and take possible action on Greenfield Library Board Liaison.
This is the new one.
This is the new one? This is a new one, yeah, that's right. And they really did specifically request a board member. Is there anyone that would be interested in serving?
You know what, they really did not request a board member. They asked for us to appoint someone from the district. And Mr. DeCuisco is on the Hales Corners Library Board. And I think it makes more sense to have someone that's a teacher or an administrator in the district to be on the library board than it makes for a board member to be on the library board.
That would be awesome continuity for...
I mean, I'm not suggesting Chris to do all of them. No.
Small community.
But, I mean, do we have a reading specialist, or do we have, you know, a teacher that's interested in this, or another administrator that's interested in this? I think it would make much more sense, because, I mean, they specifically asked us to consider appointing someone from your district to serve on the library board. It didn't say a board member, so, um, my personal opinion is that it would make sense to have someone, um, from the district.
If, if you'd like, Lynne, we can put it on our agenda Thursday, the admin team, and see what we come up with. Throwback at the staff then a little bit.
Okay, okay.
Chris, can you tell us what the involvement is with each, with Hill's Corners? The liaison?
The Hales Corners Liaison, um, updates with the, with the school, the different schools, initiatives that we're doing here in Whitnall, where there's some natural ties between the library and things we can do with our programs that we can jointly, you know, put on, like what we've been doing recently with Eric actually going over there and talking about internet safety and, um, the doctors, and some of the outreach programs. So, it's just an opportunity to connect with the community.
How often do you meet?
We meet, uh, once a month, for about, uh, three hours a night.
Twelve months a year, throughout the summer as well? I would assume Greenfield's by close to that, if not the same? I don't know.
At least once a month. Are you interested? I would guess.
No, I saw my name on there though.
Because you were re- I think, because who was, we were trying to decide if you were gonna be a resident, I don't know who's...
We didn't write it.
We didn't write it. Someone, but I think it came with who.
I really don't wanna read.
Told you.
No, yeah, I'll, ultimately, if, if, I would do it, but I, but I do believe Nancy's opinion is correct, that, and then just figuring what Chris had to say, there, he's more in tune with what the programs that are in our schools are going to there, you know, that are, that he's suggesting and working with the librarian to have those type of programs in the library. And my children have, um, benefited from the Hales Corners Library, cause it's so much closer than the Greenfield Library. And, uh, um, so it, it is a, it is a good position and if someone that's in tune with what's going on needs to be in there.
Right. But about a third of our residents live in Greenfield, so it makes sense to coordinate with them.
Do we want to, um, make a motion then to just delegate this to our superintendent? Can we do that? And then we can take action and move it forward? Without bringing it back?
You actually don't have to do anything. If you don't take any action at all, it just tables and sits and...
You can do it.
And then if you, at a future meeting, wanna bring it back, we can do that.
Or can you just appoint? I'm trying to just move it forward.
Oh, sure, sure.
Without a board motion.
Yeah.
It doesn't need a board motion, does it?
And you could also end up appointing, you know, one of us if somebody ends up speaking up for it.
Yeah, if you can't...
If we delegate it to him, but we'll find out Thursday.
Find out Thursday, with your admin.
The admin team meeting, yeah.
And then, just let us know. How, how does that sound? All right, so we don't need to vote on that then? This one is just, is there any vote? We just not vote?
We don't, we don't wanna vote to delegate to, you can if you'd like. Otherwise it...
Well, we're discussing and it says take possible action. We don't have to take any action. We've discussed it, so.
Thank you. Let's just read what it says, right? I think I could use some reading help too. Okay, good. We're, um, we're done with that then. Okay, next is comments from school board, um, regarding agenda items for future consideration. No actions taken on these items. This is the list of things that we have asked for. I just wanna briefly mention though, that we are looking at the Whitnall block party at the next meeting. So that's, that's scheduled already. And I will ask Kathy to start to coordinate schedules so we can do the board member roles and responsibilities, um, to staff members, so we can, but we, I mean, not staffers. We just wanna make sure we do a board workshop every year to look at roles and responsibilities. I think it's in our policy that we do that. So, that item will be a separate night, hopefully when we, obviously when we all can make it, okay? So I'll have Kathy work on that. Um, the resource report, that could just be a report.
But, you know, the school resource officer, maybe we could have, tie in with the after-hours, the secure building with her, or her.
Okay. That would make sense.
There's more than one, right?
Well, if they have some...
That would make sense.
If they have some opinions or, or what's going on in different places.
Okay. And I would suggest that the ADA issues would be through finance.
Facilities finance.
Facility and finance. If you could just include ADA updates for the district in there and, and perhaps we need a comprehensive study of that.
Kathy, could you make a note and put that on the agenda for May 5th, please?
That would be great. Okay. So then we're down to just a couple things here. Legislative update, I'm not so sure we need that as a future agenda item. We know now...
No, we just need to put it, we'll just put it on the agenda as...
It'll come up with our, as needed.
As needed.
As, as needed. And then I will work with, uh, Lowell and Kathy on other committee updates as needed as well, so.
Could we?
All right.
Could we have as like a standing part of the agenda, any committee up, you know, updates?
Committee updates.
So, you know, that way if I've, you know, all of a sudden, there's something legislative, but I forget to email you to add it to the agenda?
Especially, like, when a committee, if we know the committee has met, we could then schedule a report of that committee, of the next committee of the whole meeting. So like if Personnel Committee meets, then if you have the next committee, the whole meeting, then you could put Personnel Committee report on the agenda so that they could update you as to the status out there.
Well, she's asking if we couldn't just put in a committee updates on. And keep it like the first mu- meeting of the month, or this, you know, one, and always just have that on there.
Whichever meeting it makes most sense for that committee.
Right.
Yeah, it would always be the first meeting of the month of the committee.
That, at the committee of the whole meeting, you'd have committee reports, and whoever has met in that month then reports, it doesn't have to always be itemized, does it?
No, as long as you have a discussion on it, you can just do committee reports. Um, cause if you're gonna discuss it, the law says you have to put it down. You know, so if you're gonna do committee report, let's say she's gonna do a committee report on facilities and we're gonna have a discussion about her report on, you know, what do you think of this option versus that option? Then we'd have to do, it's cool, it's just lightning now, a committee report or financing facilities with discussion on recommendations from the committee.
Okay, good. So now that we've sort of cleaned up this list, there's still a couple on here that will stay on here, we'll work those in. Uh, traffic flow at Edgerton also should go to the Finance and Facility Committee, okay? Cause that's where that's been talked about and will continue to be talked about. All right? All right, is that okay, Q?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. So we are, we're gonna make sure these all get done in one way or another. Okay, good. Now, are there any other items that you would like to have us consider in the future, any board members?
Yes.
Too bad, no.
It's gonna sound kinda trivial, but there's a, there's a reason behind it. Um, the Hales Corners Fourth of July Parade. But if you could, and that actually needs to, I hate to do this, but that actually kinda needs to be on that May meeting.
What's the issue? What's the, is there a question?
We're, we're having...
No, what is she, what?
We're having a request from the Fourth of July Committee that I was asked to bring to the board.
Okay. Okay.
And you can't unless it's on the agenda, right?
Right. And, yeah. So we can have that in for May. And I'll make it as quick as possible.
Okay. Are you on that committee? Is that why?
No.
Someone just called you? Okay. All right. Anything else? Wow. Not bad for my first meeting, you guys. Awesome, okay. Board member announcements. Anyone wanna go?
I have, I have a lot.
I, cause there were a lot of great things going on in this district.
And I even went through my list and I eliminated a few, because, you know, I have to say, we have a, you know, we have a lot of communication going on in the district, so I think we're mostly aware of all these things, but I just wanna highlight a few things. Tomorrow, Dr. Holt and I plan on attending a presentation, um, about First Robotics Prodigy, which is presented by the Milwaukee Chapter of International Society of Automation Members. Um, a parent from the district is a member of that group and invited us to come and hear about, uh, First Robotics Program. And if it was, you know, for us to kinda look at, to see if it's something that we might want to bring to the district for, you know, our students, or at least bring to the district to find out if there's any interest from students, parents, and if it ties in with, um, some of the relevancy of learning in the classroom. So, um, also any other board members who might wanna attend, or anybody from the district,